...added on at the end of September 7. According to this, you may spend a 14-day period for unusual circumstances such as extreme weather but only for seven days, and that makes sort of that whole section consistent. And then additionally, at the end of paragraph 8.1, the following should be added: Failure to complete the inspection within the time frames provided constitutes acceptance of the improvement for warranty. And one of the problems that we seem to be having is that all the department heads are supposed to show up for a warranty walk-through and a sign-off, and then if they don't show up, then that period gets extended until we can get those comments and get an additional inspection. So, we'd like to think that if you don't complete the inspection within the time frame, that that constitutes acceptance of the improvement for warranty. You know, there are a lot of staff that go on vacation in the summertime and that sort of thing, and, you know, they need to send it, that department, whichever one it is, needs to send a deputy to the meeting so that there's just one meeting. Because from a developer's point of view, multiple meetings to get under warranty simply increase costs because the community staff, we're charged for the community staff, but then we're also charged for the engineer, we're also charged for the private inspector, and so there needs to be a time constraint put on it. So I guess, do any of the other commissioners have any comments or objections to that?
Ray, you have changed it correctly.
I think it's a great idea.
There's one other at the bottom of that other new section.
Oh, yes, and then it should be added that provides not later than 60 days prior to the expiration of the warranty period, the municipality shall provide a list of any remaining deficiencies needing correction, and if no such deficiencies have been noted, the project shall be off warranty. So the warranty period is for a two-year, 24-month period of time, but most developments go under warranty in the fall, and having 22 months gives two construction seasons that if there is a deficiency, it is likely to occur. But if it's for a two-year period of time, then that rolls over, you know, say you get approved and get under warranty in October, which is not unusual, then, you know, two years from that period of time in order to get off warranty, that is October, and you're not likely going to be able to do any repairs after that period of time. So that extends really that period of time for another 10 or 12 months. So I think that at the 22-month period of time, that all the deficiencies need to be noted.
Does it need to address the amount of time that the warranty bond should be refunded, or how many days is it interested in?
Well, under H., H. 7, the municipality releases the obligation for performance guarantees upon acceptance of the improvements for warranty. So, once the improvements are accepted, if the project is accepted, then the obligations are released, the performance obligations.
Well, no, 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 it's, Don.
Yeah, there's actually two phases to the warranty. If you want to file your plat before the improvements are done, you have to post what they call a performance guarantee. The performance guarantee is equal to value to remaining work plus an overrun allowance that's prescribed by code. Once it passes a final inspection, we then authorize per a section of the code, a reduction in that performance guarantee down to the warranty guarantee level. Then we hold that warranty guarantee for two years.
So, Ray, what you are suggesting is if no such deficiencies have been noted, the project shall be off warranty. So, Don, what would be a reasonable period of time from the inspection and the correction to release the bond? Would that be 30 days? Would that be appropriate?
Generally, a bond carries a 60-day grace period.
60 days?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm looking around the room at some of the engineers and folks that are here, 60 days for the release of the bond after off warranty? That seems reasonable? Okay.
Is that going to be?
Rich, hello! Thank you for attending. Yes, appreciate it.
So is that suggestion to be added to?
Yes. Yeah.
One other question on this, do we want to address the separate public hearing? Staff says there has to be a separate public hearing on this.
Yes, that's really a good idea. So, I didn't get a response. I sent an email that if there are substantive changes in this chapter, according to an email that the commission received from Tom Davis, that we would have to have a new public hearing. But it was my understanding that when we held the public hearings in March, we had two of them, that all of the provisionally adopted chapters were included in that so that we would not have to have another public hearing, that the only chapter that was not included was Chapter 10, which is Eagle River. Is that correct, Jerry?
That's partially correct. What you're delving into is established code, code that's in current effect, so you didn't advertise to go into that section. You advertised, we advertised for provisionally adopted chapters. This is current code, and that was not advertised.
Well, I understand that there is information or there are standards that are in this chapter, but I guess I would disagree with you, and I think other commissioners would too, that if we are making changes to this chapter, and many of the issues that we're going to be addressing have been part of public testimony, including Mr. Coffey and from other engineers, that there shouldn't be a need to reopen the public hearing.
We sent a request for legal opinion today, and I believe it will come back. It says this is adopted code. It's not provisionally adopted code. You would need to advertise this if you were going to tinker with this particular section, so.
Well, wouldn't that be true then, of all of the proposed amendments that we have been addressing when we're adding and deleting items?
I don't believe so, because, you know, you're in the old provisionally adopted code. There is, there are a few relations to the existing adopted code, but all of this is in the adopted code. It's none of the provisionally. It was implemented early on for whatever reason, so it is in effect today. So we've sent the request in through. And you can continue to do what you're proposing to do here, but I think legal will come back and agree with that opinion.
Well, we will continue on and wait for that opinion, and if we need to, then we will do that, because this is a very important matter.
Could it be advertised on for the June 4 public hearing?
Yeah.
If you have specific amendments you're proposing, you can advertise them, but if you, you know, you could do it two ways. You could just say you can look at that whole section of what's adopted currently, or if you have specific amendments, but the public needs to know what your agenda is.
So the way, the way I understand, Jerry, what you're explaining then is if we have just changes to the existing code that's here tonight, that's all we have to have public hearing on, if those items that we wanted to have changed. Is that correct?
If that's, if that's all you're proposing to change in the existing code, we could advertise that.
Now, now I'm really confused.
Yeah.
Because if it's in Chapter 7, can we just say we're going to take only those things in Chapter 7? We're not going to open it up to everything, because we've already had public hearing on the provisionally approved document. So we could say we're going to take it up only on these amendments.
What we're staff referring to are the established Chapter 8 that's already adopted in code in effect today. So if you're taking that existing code and working with the existing language and not the provisionally adopted code, then it's a problem.
I thought that's the reason we did it, the way we did it, is so that we were doing it all at one time. We had that question answered. I mean, we asked the question, and we were told that if you opened it up to everything, we wouldn't have to go through each section.
The only thing we advertised was the provisionally adopted code.
That's not true.
Well, we'll pull it out and look at it.
No, we were very specific.
No, we're kind of saying, what did we actually do? Staff has indicated that we advertised the provisionally adopted chapter.
But if it's the same subject matter?
I think it blends. I think there's some hearing over there, so go ahead and do what you're going to do.
You know, I think that there's an ability to, as Jerry said, to have noticing on those specific amendments that public can react to. So I think it can be done.
Well, you know, my position would be that if you have to do it for this chapter, you have to do it for all the chapters then, if that's, and our whole point was is that we didn't want to do that when we took the public testimony and we opened it up for all of the provisionally adopted chapters.
So if there were any issues, we could hear them all at one time. We didn't have to piece me out.
Yeah.
And that was the whole reason, the strategy behind that piece.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have to see what staff actually advertised, and, you know, my understanding, it was the provisionally adopted chapter.
If we need to advertise for the June 4, when do we have to let you know what's, what's being advertised? Whether it's the chapter as a whole or just particular?
It would be at least a 10-day notice.
Okay.
When do, when, can we expect a legal opinion?
We just developed this afternoon, so it depends on when legal opinion is coming.
Could you send all the commissioners their requests so that we can see their requests? And to Sally? Thank you. All right, so, our recommendation for 21.08.030, page 411, has to do with private streets. So carrying this a little bit further, would this have to be re-advertised because we're dealing with private streets? Private streets is dealt, is a topic for this chapter.
Any of those topics that are provisionally adopted code, feel free.
Okay.
Existing code language, if you're going to tinker, the code is in fact today, that's not what we advertise, so.
Are you specifically referring to the Design Criteria Manual issue?
Staff, can John give you a light out there with existing code?
Okay.
Back in 2007, everybody wanted to adopt the Current Subdivision Agreement Regulation Code before the rest of it. They wanted to get that ahead of everything. So that was firmly adopted, and then they had overlooked the fact that there was not an implementation date in the actual AO that was approved by the Assembly, so they went back and revisited and said, "We're including the effective date now, and we're also making it retroactive to the initial approval." So it is now firmly set in code. It's no longer provisionally adopted. It is adopted in full, 100 percent. So any change here would be an AO to change existing enacted legislation.
So the AO is exactly the same as the provisionally adopted chapter?
No, what I did was this, when I was asked to.
I'm getting a variety of head shaking around here, because if it is, then it's in here and we can change it.
Okay. But what I did was this, knowing that my manager has other business in front of the Assembly right now to make changes to the existing code, and then knowing what kind of changes that you want to make in the new Title 21 rewrite, I tried to mesh the two, because the business in front of the Assembly right now has been postponed twice now. And the first postponement, they actually said they wanted to postpone it to be more in line with the schedule for the Title 21 rewrite acceptance. So I meshed the ideas from what you thought was provisionally adopted, from what was the amendments of the officially adopted, and came up with a recommendation that I did. Can that make sense?
No. Can I ask the attorney what he thinks?
Sure.
Do they have what you think?
I think you're bound by the subject matter. You're introducing new subject matter. Warranties, provisions with regard to warranties are contained in the provisionally adopted code. My view is you can discuss and make recommendations to the Assembly on how they might have to change the warranties, if at all, because it's a subject that's in there. It's code language, and I'm assuming, I haven't seen you notice, but I'm assuming you noticed that you would be discussing all of the matters contained in the hearing. And if that's what you noticed, then you're free to discuss it, and remember, you're making a recommendation.
Right.
So here's another thing, and I don't see any reason why you couldn't make a recommendation because of some failure to notice that you were going to amend existing code when this provision in here is either existing code or amends existing code as it's written today in the provisionally adopted. So, but Mr. Wheeler is city attorney, and he's the man who needs to be relying on that.
So I guess I'm confused. This, this Chapter 7 that we have, or 8 we have now?
Yes.
Is this the one that's been approved and set in code, or is it something different than this?
Chapter 7 or Chapter 8?
Chapter 8.
Chapter 7, 8.
And I apologize for that.
It's 8.
Yes, 8, Chapter 8.
Is this exactly what's been approved?
Okay. 21.08.06.0 is the only part of 08 that's been fully approved.
Subdivision agreements.
Yes, subdivision agreements. And I think with whatever comes out of this committee here, if I could add, it's probably something that the Assembly is going to take the existing requests that they have in front of them now, and probably further amend it from the floor to make it match.
Now, Chairman?
Yes.
Please continue on to doing what you're doing. It is part of 21.08.06.0. The language is different in the provisionally adopted, is in existing code, so just continue on to 21.
I think we should just continue on. Yes, thank you.
We're on to it.
All right, so the next item for discussion is private streets. 21.08.02, get it off that, page 411 on the commissioner's schedule. Should be, our recommendation, my recommendation is it should be amended to provide that private street should be allowed if the subdivision has a recorded declaration which provides for a homeowners association to maintain and repair the streets and a notice placed on the plat referencing the declaration. And the rationale behind all of this is that a lot of, contrary to Mr. Davis's issue response to this, Anchorage is indeed running out of land for compact housing, and private streets allows for better utilization of the available land, and as long, and I know the city's concern is that if it's a private street, they get the maintenance repair complaints, and they have to, they ultimately think that they're going to have to end up with these streets. But that's, usually, those complaints are usually from subdivisions that were built in the 80s that don't have a proper homeowners association and declaration and a note on the plat. So as long as the private property owners for the lots that have been created on a private street are noticed, that they are responsible for the maintenance and the repair of those streets, and that there will be a due assessment for those streets, it seems to me that the issue that the city has regarding private streets goes away. And one of the quote "policy statements" for Anchorage Housing is the affordability issue, and private streets does allow for lower-cost lot development. So that's my recommendation. Do we have comments?
I think it's reasonable.
Yeah. Okay, all right, so that is my recommendation. Item number four, access to Chugatz State Park, community use areas, and natural resource use areas.
Just asking him to pick code.
Oh, okay. So this has been a big issue, particularly on the hillside area, and we were looking for a compromise in regards to this. It's my opinion that land owned by private landowners adjacent to a park, that that park becomes an amenity for that developer. And as a result of that, I believe it is appropriate for the developer to provide either a trail or a road access, access. I don't believe that the private landowner should pay for that trail or pay for that road, but they should provide the easement for the access for either one of those, depending upon what the current park plan is, whether or not they want, whether the park plan calls for a road or a trail, which would be dependent upon the topography and that sort of thing. I don't think that the private landowner should be required to provide a parking lot. I think if the park entity wants to have a parking lot, that it should be provided on parkland, but certainly it is the responsibility of the private landowner if he's going to be developing his property, and there is a park abutting his property, that he should provide either a trail easement or a road easement, so that there is access both for the homeowners that are going to live in the subdivision and for the public.
How do you not do that if you don't provide parking for the public?
Well, I think the parking is the responsibility of Chugatz State Park or whoever.
So whoever develops the trail or the road would develop the parking?
Yes.
Okay, that's the point.
On parkland, yes.
I'm not concerned about the land. I understood that part.
Yeah, yeah.
But the lot, parking lot, if it was public access, would have to be done by whomever provided the access.
Right.
Do you have a trail or a road easement width that you would prefer to write in here or not? Or would?
I think that's a, a good idea. The road width, I think, 60 would be 60?
And 20 for trails.
And 20 for trails, I think.
60 is pretty wide.
Okay. Bruce?
I just want to get clarification here. We have two sections that we're talking about, 1A and 1B. Mr. Coffey, when he did his analysis, was particularly reacting to 1B, which requires a dedication of a vehicle right of way for public access. I believe that your concerns are focused on that, but I want to clarify. Are we keeping 1A and changing 1, and then changing 1B?
419, top of the page. Second paragraph down.
The Plating Authority shall require the dedication of a vehicle right of way for public access to trails and parks' access points as defined in an adopted plan. An acceptable vehicle right of way shall be a public street. That would be 60 feet. Yes?
Yeah, I think that I agree with the idea that what is appropriate for a subdivision is the, usually the easement for a trail or a road that provides access into a park area, particularly where the access is identified in an adopted plan. I mean, that's reasonable, that's what's been done historically by the Plating Board. The concern I would have is that in, there are instances where we know that a project's coming up and that parking is necessary inside an area, and we would have to reserve that as part of the plat. Now, I don't think it's appropriate for the developer to pay for that, but at some, there has to be some way during the subdivision process to ensure that that parking area, usually small by the way, not large one, would be provided, usually we're talking about spaces for two or three cars.
Why would you have a problem with that being inside park access? It's not being used by the subdivision developer. Why would that be, your thought, rather than?
Well, I guess the reason why is because usually the state master plan does not identify these types of facilities inside the state park. State park facilities are usually larger facilities. An example would be the ones up in the hillside, for example. Normally, what we've stated in plating is where you have a access point into the park, and there's usually a need for parking of one or two vehicles, not a whole bunch. And that occurs on private land, not inside the park itself.
Well, I sort of, you know.
Kind of like a taking.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's the dilemma. I think that in fact, there needs to be an ability to reserve that parking area as part of the subdivision plat, but still have the municipality pay for it. There is a provision that's called the Reserve Track Clause that I don't know if it includes parking areas, it usually includes other stuff, but this particular section or this particular issue might be dealt with in that Reserve Track Clause. So I'm okay with the concept of easement for a road or trail. I'm just concerned about the, if we have, if we have lost flexibility for providing other facilities that may be necessary in the future, and I think available, I can think of as parking.
One of the other issues that we ran into on the Plating Board was the steepness, the lot being very steep, and you can't make a straight trail right through to get to that property, to get to that park, because it was straight up in the air. So doing a switchback trail, all of a sudden, then you get a lot wider. So, I mean, you, do you need to write in that and say, you know, I mean, yeah, the developer said, okay, here's your trail easement, but it's not usable by anybody but a doll sheet, you know, so.
Stairway would work, right?
Yes.
I mean, can you say the Plating Authority may require the dedication or the imposition of an easement for a trail or road necess, at an access point as defined in an adopted plan? You word it that way?
With compensation?
No.
No.
I did not include parking in that.
No, you didn't, right.
Right.
But there should, if, if parking has to be on private property, it should have compensations.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you. I just don't know how to word it right now. I think we might be better off by agreeing with the concept here, even the wording, and putting the parking issue aside, so we have a bit more information about it.
Well, that would be nice, but we have such limited time.
Connie?
Yeah.
How, what kind of impact would it have if you required a certain number of parking spots? Give an example, if you're doing 180 acres or 60 acres, if you required a, you know, a 30 or 90 by 30 kind of a parking area, I mean, could you do it by saying you have to provide so many square feet of parking at the end of a, of a trail or road?
Well, I think the problem is, is first of all, it devalues the adjacent lots, okay, to be next to a parking lot. Secondly, it's left then to the private, to the private homeowners association to manage that parking lot, and that really shouldn't end this liability.
Well, they don't have to manage the easement if it's not there. I mean, if they develop.
Well, if you have parking there, then you have lots of other opportunities for activities.
I got it.
And that's why I think parking belongs on park land. If, you know, if they can create other facilities, why can't they create their own parking lot? If we provide the access opportunity for them.
Another aspect of this is that oftentimes we do not want to provide parking because that provides a lot of people coming in to the residential subdivision, and we don't want that to recur. If we provide parking, we create a problem oftentimes, so we typically want to keep it very small.
But I could take that argument and reverse it, you know, for the property owners, for the homeowners association, for the subdivision. It creates, it creates the same dilemma and the same problem. I don't care if you, if you have a reasonable access and you're providing it, then, you know, you're going to have more cars there than parking is going to be allowed. And then they're going to spill off onto private lots, and then people are going to get upset, and it's going to be, it's going to be a big problem if it's, if, if the park, if the park wants a parking lot, they should put it on their land.
Well, I think it's not just the state, it's also the municipality, and one of the ways out of this, I suppose, come to think about, is that in the adopted plans, we specify whether or not parking will be provided or not, or needs to be provided. And so that gives us a clear indication as to when it would be necessary, and if it's not identified on an adopted plan, it goes away as being an issue.
Well, that's a good theory, but you know, plans change, Bruce, and, you know. Well, that's a good theory, but you know, plans change, Bruce, and, you know, they're subject to, you know, community input, and I understand the need for the community to have adequate parking for access to parks. I think it's enough for the private property owner to provide the access, and if the road's going to be built for the park, then they can build the parking lot as well. It's the only way that it's going to get managed properly, if it's, if the parking lot is on parkland.
Madam Chair, I think.
Yes?
In that same section of Reserve Tracks, the provisionally adopted code talks about using Reserve Tracks for school sites and for preservation dwellers. And the way it's presently programmed, it has to be budgeted during the capital improvement program, and it hasn't been used very often, so it would not be, it would not be a good mechanism for using here. When you look at the current language in D1, it talks about trails, it doesn't talk about roads, it talks about trails.
Right.
So if state wanted parking roads and trails to begin with, then this is a compromise through the committee to provide trail access.
So are you suggesting that we don't have to, an acceptable vehicle right-of-way shall be a public street? We don't have to provide, are you suggesting that we don't have to provide a?
You shouldn't provide access in the park.
Right.
You should make provisions for it, but not for the improvement.
But not for the improvement, and not, and you would call a parking lot an improvement as well?
Yes.
All right, okay, so, what?
I was just reading, one should re-present. Section B1, because of the requirement for both vehicle and trail access.
We are proposing that we have either a street access or a trail access, depending upon the topography, the type of park, et cetera, and the plan, but that we don't have to provide both, the private developer, the owner.
Since the private developer does not have to provide the improvements, correct?
Correct.
Right. Has to provide the land through easement or dedication.
Or, yes. For road or trail access, depending upon the most recently adopted hack of the park plan.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Section B says the Plating Authority shall also, shall require the dedication of a vehicular act right-of-way for public access to trails. So it could be read that both have to be required.
Madam Chair, I missed D, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm B.
Yes, Margaret.
Different plans have different standards, and they've included the Chugatch State Park Access Inventory with the same authority as municipal plans that are adopted by the Assembly. I know that it has been revised, but I'm familiar with the Chugatch State Park Access Inventory when their standard was a trail access every thousand feet.
Wow.
And they're, they are.
Like every 10 lots, theoretically.
Well, if you have a large lot, you could have one lot that has more than one trail access on that particular lot.
But how do you put that?
So by including that access inventory, that raises it to the level of an adopted plan every bit as much as municipal trails plan, parks plan.
Well, what is the consensus, we'll fix it, but what is the consensus from the commission in terms of, number one, the parking lot, the access, and then I think we're going to have to discuss the number of access points if we're talking about Chugatch State Park? A limitation, a limitation.
Well, I mean, first of all, that access inventory is fairly dated.
There is a new plan out that has different requirements, the one that you specified.
I've never seen that one, so I'm working for the, from using the old one.
Okay, it's the access easement, access plan for Chugatch State Park, but anyway. I guess going back to this, that the issue seems to be vehicular right-of-way for public access, and it seems what we're trying to focus on now is either a road or a trail easement for the purpose of access at certain points into Chugatch State Park. And I would use the word "may require" as opposed to "shall require" to make it discretionary, because what you want to do in the Plating Authority is use your available plans with common sense to impose those requirements that are appropriate at that particular location. And that's what you can do with some of the changes of wording here.
Okay. That seems to, Ray?
I think that we're already out of land, and to give more to the DNR would be absolutely ridiculous, because parks are huge, and if they need a parking lot, I'm okay with the access. Trails are better than parking lots, obviously, next to a subdivision, but if they need one, they could put it in their own land, they got plenty of it, and the public benefits because a developer wants a road. That benefits the public already, because now they've got an easy access point, and it's there for them to develop at any time they want to. And we're running out of land, which is no reason to give it to DNR.
But just to point out, these are subdivisions on private land, and we're talking about access on those subdivisions that provide access and turn into the park. We're not talking about a park improvement. If it's a park improvement, it's specified in the master plan, and it will be on state land. We're talking, in this instance, about the Plating Authority for the approval of subdivisions on private land.
Well, I think one recommendation would be to try to figure out, not to overburden the private property owner and the developer from having to put in a trail every thousand feet. That seems pretty onerous, yes. So we'll work on language, we need to move on. Okay. Sidewalks, walkways, pathways, 2108-030-F.5, page 412 of the Commissioner's Packet, the recommendation. A new section B should be added, which provides as follows, sidewalks, walkways, pathways, and trails shall not be required in cul-de-sacs. Now, the provisionally adopted chapter, as I understand it, requires sidewalks around a cul-de-sac. The mayor's amendment requires a sidewalk only on one side, and my recommendation is that, is that cul-de-sacs are not well utilized as far as walking is concerned. I think there is certainly a developer responsibility to provide connectivity on neighborhood streets and streets that intersect, but a cul-de-sac, in my, in my experience, is highly desirable because of the privacy factor that it allows the lot owners and the homeowners on that particular circle. And my own experience tells me anecdotally that, from a walking perspective, when I'm in communities that have cul-de-sacs, we don't see a lot of walkers walking their dogs inside the cul-de-sac. They walk along the neighborhood streets. And so that's my recommendation, Commissioners.
And this is recommendations coming out of Coffey Port as well, to identify as being a problem as well.
Is there any objection or further discussion on that consideration? Number six, pedestrian facilities, 2108.050H, page 426 of the Commissioner's Packet, the recommendation, only a sidewalk or walkway should be required in urban areas, not both. In rural areas, only a pathway or trail should be required, not both. Again, we're speaking to the constraints, the availability of land, and if there, I guess I could use a couple of streets as examples, you know, Strawberry Road, Old Eagle River Road, even Spinard Road, we've all seen those at Planning and zoning, where there are issues from property owners that the width of the road and the requirements for sidewalks or walkways on both sides of the road are opposed. And a lot of that has to do with the number of driveways that might be on one side of the road, the topography, the constraints as it relates to the availability of land, the avoidance of retaining walls and all that sort of thing, so.
What about AMAS? Doesn't AMAS have a specific, that this is how the roads are supposed to be built? We're going to have a certain sidewalks and pathways and all of that, so doesn't that already govern what we're talking about?
It's not AMAS, it's actually the ASO standards that are used when you use federal funds, and they're very specific standards if they have to follow.
Those are federal, right?
They're federal.
They're federal, so major arterials, yeah. Don?
Yeah, I'll do the chair. When you're talking about sidewalks and walkways, I direct you to be careful, because sidewalks are generally parallel or longitudinal to the roadway, where the pedestrian follows the same path as the vehicles.
Okay.
But walkways are generally interpreted as those paved pathways that interconnect neighborhoods, like going down sidewalk lines. Good example is up by South High School, in one of the adjacent subdivisions, there's actually a 10-foot dedicated walkway so that kids from that neighborhood have a walkway to get from the sidewalk into the school site.
Right, that's turning the view of the states, right.
Yeah, and West Park is another really good example. There are dedicated walkways throughout West Park, and without them, you'd find kids, adults, walkers, dogs, all cutting through your side yards.
I was told, I don't know this for a fact, Don, but I was told that there's only one walkway in South Park, and when they did planning, they were able to.
South Park.
Huh? And not in South Park, West Park, I'm sorry.
West Park, we're developing walkways with each phase, depending on whether or not there is a walkway in the master plan for that phase.
Okay.
Yes. Granted, it's piecemeal, but it's coming together.
Yeah.
And that's a 10-foot easement versus a 20-foot?
It's generally a 10-foot walkway, it's not even an easement, it's not meant to be obstructed by a neighbor, or a property fence.
Right.
It's meant to stay open so that a property owner can't fence it in.
And you could fence parallel to it, but you can't?
Yeah, in West Park, for example, there's a four-foot fence to go on both sides of the walkway.
Yes, which is, like, interconnecting.
That's right.
That's a safety issue, though, for, so that you can be out in the night and day and not be in a corner, and somebody can be hiding then, that's a bad story.
For the walkway?
Yeah, because if you have tall fences, and you've got a place for someone to hide in the middle of the night, if there's not, if it's not obstructed by fences, then it's more out in the open, then it's more, it's safer.
So my, just understanding that, as opposed to having sidewalks on both sides of the street, you're not necessarily against going to one sidewalk as opposed to two, but you want to make sure that sidewalks and walkways not be confused, so that if you have a sidewalk, then somehow you couldn't have a walkway, and you might still need a walkway for connectivity to?
The latter, yes.
Okay. I don't have any objection to that, although it does devalue the lot values where the walkways are, really, quite frankly, it does.
Yeah, but I can see a need for it. I mean, I can see a lot of needs for it in certain areas, where you've got schools that are walkable, but you have to go all the way around three blocks to get to it, rather than having a walkway across, or, you know, shopping, or any of those kind of things, where you're trying to make people more friendly to walking.
But what if the walkway doesn't go anywhere?
Well, that's another issue.
Except to another, another cove.
Well, or if it goes to a sidewalk. You know, it needs to tie in somewhere, it has to have some connectivity, right? You can't just go to the, into the road, only like a cul-de-sac. I mean, you wouldn't need a walkway or cul-de-sac, right, unless it was from a school, two in front.
Well, in Devonshire subdivision, for example, at the end of a cul-de-sac, there is a walkway, and all it does is go to another cul-de-sac. It doesn't go to, it doesn't go to a school, it doesn't go to any public facility, it doesn't go to a sidewalk, it simply goes to another cul-de-sac. So.
But I think that these are issues that are going to have to be side-by-side phases. When you're doing the planning, you have to look at the site, and quite often, there is a need for a walkway to connect areas like schools, for example, we've, I've seen that quite a bit.
I agree with schools, I mean, I absolutely agree. Turning into the state subdivision is a good example of that walkway, and that walkway is used to get to South High School, and that walkway was put in specifically because, it was a planning requirement, specifically because there was that site through South High School. And that makes a lot of sense, but just to put in a walkway for the purpose of a walkway when it doesn't connect to a public facility or a sidewalk on a neighborhood street.
I thought this was a discretionary requirement of the Plating Authority when it's looking at its plat.
I think the concern was that sidewalks are required under, and it references 2107-060, are required as determined by Transportation and Connectivity Standards, and then I think that that section in turn requires sidewalks on both sides. And I think the concern was not to have sidewalks on both sides of the same.
That was the issue, not to have sidewalks on both sides. We are going to have to adjourn, because we have only about eight or nine minutes until the regular meeting. The question is, we have whether or not the commission will want to continue this work session after we close our regular meeting, or whether or not we'll be done.
I have it continued.
You should continue, okay, get it over with, all right, okay.